Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 18th Montgomery County Commission Meeting. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is being live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org for guidelines approved by House Bill 197. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. First up, County Engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have three resolutions on the agenda today. The first is Resolution Number 20-1069 to release the 10% cash maintenance bond provided by Reeser and Associates LLC for Ashbury Meadows, Section 3 in Washington Township in the amount of $33,735.42. 1070 is to accept the performance bond provided by ECC Mad River LLC for the Tera Building Site in Miami Township in the amount of $27,872.27. And 1071 is to accept the performance bond and subdivision contract for the Windstone Platte, Section 5 in Washington Township in the amount of $108,956.05.
I move for approval. Did we lose Carolyn?
My dear. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There she is.
Okay. All those in favor again? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Auditor's Office.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Auditor's Office, we have Resolution 1072 authorizing the purchase through a state term cooperative contract from Dale Marketing LP for Microsoft Dynamics 365 licensing for the financial system replacement in an amount not to exceed $242,845.32.
I move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 1073 apply for a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the FY 2020 DNA Capacity Enhancement for Backlog Reduction Program in an amount of $292,263. And Resolution 1074, accept a grant from the Office of Criminal Justice Services for the funding of opiate testing supplies, training, and travel in the amount of $54,103.15.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
County Coroner.
Under the County Coroner, we have Resolution 1075 authorizing an amendment to a grant from the National Network of Public Health Institutes for the National Disaster Related Mortality Surveillance Program by extending the date and modifying the statement of work.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Elections.
Under the Board of Elections, we have Resolution 1076 authorizing the purchase through an Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract from Office Depot, Inc. of disposable face masks to be used in the presidential election in an amount not to exceed $59,960.
Move for approval.
Did anybody second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's Office, we have approval of the minutes of the meeting on August 11, 2020. Resolution 1077, approval of bills. And Resolution 1078, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Under Administrative Services, we have Resolution 1079, approval of personnel actions. That list is available in the Clerk's Office. Resolution 1080, authorizing a payment by warrant to Michael Spurk in an amount of $1,000. Resolution 1081, select a bid and authorize an agreement with Security 101, Ohio LLC, security contractor for the court's security improvements project at their lowest and best bid of $826,015.94. We have Resolution 1082, authorizing a letter of understanding with Public Health, Dayton, and Montgomery County for the leasing of 5,847 square feet of office space at the Rybo Building with options to renew in an annual amount of $70,748.70 through August 31, 2021. We have Resolution 1083, authorizing the purchase from eLearning Force Americas of LMS 365, a cloud-based learning platform for the Ritz Management Department at a cost not to exceed $41,457. We have two extend price agreements for environmental services. Resolution 1084, Viola ES Technical Solutions LLC for the Household Hazardous Waste Program through August 31, 2021. And 1085, Bueller Backtop for Street Opening Repairs through September 30, 2021. We also have two requests for proposals. Resolution 1086, Monday Community Correctional Institute for Detention Food Services at an estimated cost of $325,000. And Resolution 1087, Stillwater Center for Nursing Services at an estimated cost of $600,000.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, everyone. We've got three resolutions on the agenda today. First one is 1088, authorize the solid waste district to award business recycling incentive grants into agreements with businesses and organizations for the purpose of initiating recycling contracts with a recycling vendor of their choice. Resolution 1089, approve the revised plan specifications and estimated cost of $294,506.20 and reject the bids received for the Maple Crest Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project and readvertise. Resolution 1090, amend the agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for consulting services for the construction of the Vertical Asset Management Program by extending the term through December 31, 2020 at no additional cost to the county.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. OMB?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have four budget amendments for your consideration. Resolution 1091, to authorize appropriation amendments. Number 1092, to authorize additional appropriations. And 93, to authorize cash transfers. And 1094, to authorize appropriation decreases.
Move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Human Services.
Good afternoon. Under the Department of Job and Family Services, Resolution 1095 will authorize an agreement with Sinclair Community College to provide support to the Fast Forward Center under the Out-of-School Youth Initiative to prevention, retention, and contingency eligible families in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through June 30 of 2021. And then under Stillwater Center, 1096 will authorize the purchase from Arjo of 10 MaxiMove Scales in an amount not to exceed $78,690.13. Those are the only two items I have this second.
Okay. I move for approval.
I'm sorry, I have a bad connection. Should I? I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a late agenda item. 20-1098, request reconsideration and retraction of the Ohio Secretary of State's Directive 2020-16 regarding ballot drop boxes.
I move for approval.
I definitely second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We really hope he does that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want to comment on the resolution at all? Just so the public would know the context of what we're doing here?
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to. You know, we've been advocating for this for quite a while, especially the Metro County Commissioners. And the Secretary of State, by many readings of the law, could go ahead and say you can have more than one drop box in your county. He sent it to the Attorney General, who did nothing with it. About a month ago, and he didn't do anything with it. Three weeks went by. And last week, the Secretary of State decided that there could only be one drop box per county. Now, under a normal year, okay, that would be fine. But, you know, we know that there's going to be a number of people that don't want to vote in person because of COVID. And now with what's happening with the post office, people don't know what to do. And so, you know, it gave us one more option as the county. We still have our one box, but what we were hoping was we could have them throughout the county at different, perhaps at the libraries, which would have made sense because secure. But anyway, right now, Secretary of State's saying only one. And he says that's all that the law will allow him. And I think that he could do it. He has the authority. And so, we, along with many other counties throughout the state, are asking him to reconsider. So that's why we did this.
Yes, and on a phone call that I had yesterday with the large county commissioners, as well as the governor, they have all been passing similar resolutions requesting these multi-drop boxes. So keep your fingers crossed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Okay, next we have a hearing, 20-1097. It's the Whip Road Bridge Replacement Project in Washington Township. And I think Ward starts it off.
Mr. Dura, Mr. Gruner, if you would please raise your right hands.
Paul, you're on mute.
Oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Dura, Mr. Gruner, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So Joe Dura is our project manager for the Whip Road Bridge Project. And Joe will be going through the presentation for the hearing. Go.
Thank you very much, Paul, Commissioners, Administrator. Emily, you okay if I grab the screen real quick?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you much. So... Can I please get confirmation that everyone can see my screen? The Whip Road Bridge?
Yes.
Yeah, I can see it.
Thank you all very much.
Please see it, Joe.
Appreciate it. Again, my name is Joseph Dura. This is the public hearing for the Whip Road Bridge Replacement Project in Washington Township. Project is located on Whip Road at the intersection of Whip Road and Seton Hill Street in Washington Township. Looking at an aerial view of the project site, it's predominantly residential, single-family unit homes to the north and to the west. To the east, on the south side of Whip Road, immediately adjacent to the intersection is a park owned by Centerville, Washington Township Park District. And then, just to the east of the park district's parcel is the John Hole Elementary School. Scope of the project is to replace an existing deteriorated corrugated metal pipe arch bridge. Then, we are going to include pedestrian improvements along Whip Road as part of this project, which involve the installation of ADA ramps on the southwest and southeast corner of Seton Hill Whip Road intersection. And then we will install new sidewalk from said intersection along the south side of the road across the entire frontage of the Centerville, Washington Township Park District parcel, as well as the entire frontage of the John Hole School parcel. And it will tie into existing sidewalk to the east of the school parcel. For that sidewalk installation, we will do some minor storm sewer improvements. There will be modification of the guardrail on the south side due to that sidewalk. Guardrail on the north side of the intersection will be reinstalled in kind. We will bring it up to current standards. And there are some private improvements from the owner on the north side that exist within the existing highway easements that conflict with the proposed work and proposed guardrail. It is a stack stone wall. Portions of that stack stone wall that are in conflict with our work and the guardrail will be removed and not replaced. The existing pavement within the project limits will be milled and replaced. And then finally, coordinating with environmental services, we will replace portion of the water line within the intersection, as well as sanitary sewer, both of which are currently in conflict with the proposed work, but coordinated to help improve ongoing improvements of another environmental service project. So what's driving the purpose of this project? What's the need? It's the existing condition of that existing structure. The structure was originally stalled in 1953 and extended to the south in 1989 when Whip Road had a westbound left turn lane install. The bridge has a current general appraisal rating of a three. For perspective on what that is, general appraisal of nine is a brand-new bridge. A general appraisal of a zero or one is a failed structure. So this structure is, it needs to be replaced based on its condition. This is another photo showing continued condition issues. These particular structures, it becomes a safety hazard when you start getting rust at the bolts. You can get bolt line cracking. So again, the invert's rusted out. The general appraisals are three. It needs to be replaced. Coming up, out of the structure, looking at the roadway. We're standing on Whip Road, looking eastbound at the intersection of Seton Hill and Whip Road. You can see the guardrail on the left, that's the north. That'll be replaced in kind. The rail on the south, there will still be rail coming up along Seton Hill Street, but it'll be pulled back away from Whip Road to accommodate the new sidewalk. Progressing east along Whip Road, we're looking at the south side of Whip at the frontage of the Washington Township Centerville Park District parcel. Progressing east, we see the first driveway. It's the Western Drive of the John Hole School Elementary. And here we are looking, again eastward, at the frontage of the John Hole School Elementary. The school sign that you see in the photo will not be affected by this project. Another note about the property on the north side of the road. This is behind that guardrail that is to remain. A previous owner of that parcel has constructed a private dam. If you can see my cursor, this is a private dam which has been physically attached to the county's structure or inlet. All of this is within existing highway easement. We are making accommodations to allow the dam and the pond that is created by the dam to remain only because it is protected by the guardrail that we are putting in. Guardrail is there for a slope hazard and the inlet structure of the county's bridge. Moving to the south side, we're going to talk about the park district parcel, as well as the school district parcel. So the park district is parcel five, and the school is parcel seven. These are all on the south side of Whip, east of Seton Hill Street. Starting at the park district, we are asking for temporary easement from the park district. The proposed sidewalk will be able to fit into existing highway easement. We need the temporary easement for the grading purposes, being able to construct this new sidewalk, be able to provide shoulder. So in this photo, what you can see is, from the edge of pavement, you see a mowed relatively flat area. That's a little over five feet wide right there. That'll end up being a tree lawn. And then where to the right of that mowed area, you start seeing heavy dense vegetation. That is also, the ground starts to rise in elevation. So we need to move that hillside back a ways to be able to provide a flat area for the sidewalk. And it's moving of that hillside back to the right in this particular image, which causes the need for the temporary. So the work within the park district is removal of some trees. We have coordinated with the park to save as many trees as we can and to do that proposed grading to accommodate the proposed sidewalk. Moving to the east, this is the frontage of the John Hole School Elementary. We are standing on the easternmost drive to the school. So we're east looking west down the south side of Whip Road. Right here, this existing sidewalk will be modified to tie into our proposed. Again, the school sign will remain. It will not be disturbed. Proposed walk will go immediately in front of the school sign on the existing ground. The existing ground is relatively flat and doesn't really need to be adjusted. But we will be asking for temporary, just for the physical ability to construct the sidewalk. Construction equipment is so large, we do need some space. So again, this is just describing the proposed work. Installing the walk does... The proposed walk will fit an existing right-of-way. The temporary strictly for the ability to construct it. So for the costs, we have done the design in-house. Environmental Services assisted by doing the water line design. And the rest of the project is designed in-house in the Engineers' Office. Construction is estimated to be roughly $523,000. And we were successful in obtaining a grant from the Ohio Public Works for $345,750. For the schedule, we have completed the design. We are now entering into the right-of-way phase. We will wrap that up at the end of this year, December 2020. We will advertise the project in January 21 and award contract in February 21. Construction will then begin in March and wrap up in May of 21. For this work, Whip Road in the intersection of Seton Hill Street will be closed for nine weeks. The detour for traffic on Seton Hill will take them down from Seton Hill South out to Alex Bell, over to Mad River. And then for the Whip Road portion of the closure, it's Mad River North to Ron Road, Ron Road over to State Route 48, back to Whip Road. And with that, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. And I'll keep my screen up right now in case anybody wants to see something.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the hearing? And proceed?
Yes, just a minute.
Sorry, I cut out. Did you already move and I'll second? Or do you need me to?
No, not yet. Do you have the motion in front of you, Carolyn?
Hang on a second, yes. Hopefully, my internet will get me through. I move to close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the Whip Road Bridge Replacement Project in Washington Township and recognize it also necessary to the...
Uh-oh. I'll finish it.
...the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of and interrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Ohio Revised Code and authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations. And I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Comments by County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. I've got several comments today. Throughout this COVID pandemic, I try to go out and meet with our teams and engage and make sure that services are still going out to the public and that they have the access to the materials and supplies and the things that they need to deliver those services. I had an opportunity last week to meet with our JFS team. So I'd like to give them a shout out and tell them thank you for all the hard work that they've been doing. They have been faced with increased demand for SNAP or Supplemental Nutritious Assistance Program or food program, Medicaid. Case loads across all of these programs due to unemployment has been going up. And the team out at JFS has been doing a great job getting the services that people need. I'd also like to thank our team at Stillwater. Michelle and her team have done a fantastic job and have had to work a lot of overtime hours to make sure that our residents in our care facility out at Stillwater, who are our most vulnerable citizens in Montgomery County, get the services that they need. So I want to thank Michelle for her leadership and for making sure that she's protecting not only the residents, but she has been great in including COVID protocols that protect our employees. In addition, I'd like to thank Matt, and Matt is here on the call today. Matt and the Environmental Services Team, they lend a hand to the city of Dayton doing the water outage on Kiwi Street. Matt's team actually donated a 24-inch valve that helped make the repair possible so that they could get the water turned back on. So Matt, thank you, and thank the water team. Keith, the Environmental Services Team, thank you for your support in continuing to get services needed to people. And then finally, I'd like to thank our workforce team. Commissioners, you know that they have done a great job in helping to recruit over 1,500 customer service representatives to work at L Brands. They've also been helping businesses throughout the Miami Valley with essential services and recruitment and talent, helping our citizens find alternative work. And they've done an excellent job in finding ways to connect people to companies so that they can find their next career or they can be at work while they're waiting for their company to ratchet back up. But I want to continue to thank our teams across the county. The men and women, some 4,300 people across the county are working very hard to try to keep services flowing throughout our region. So thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you, Michael. And thank you for making sure that each department is getting the help they need, whether it's protection for COVID or any other kind of assistance. I really appreciate it, and I know the employees do as well. You know, we're so diverse. You know, you can just look at today. You know, the needs at Environmental Services are so much different than the needs at the Job Center. And so, to all of our team, thank you. And then, you mentioned at the end, Michael, the workforce and the jobs. I mean, that is exciting. That's a lot of jobs for our citizens, especially those that have lost employment because of COVID or maybe are only working part-time. And so, it's a great opportunity. And these positions will allow people to work remotely for now. So I think that's really big as well. And they're flexible. So for all the parents out there, I know we have a few right now on this call that may have challenges with learning from home. This is great because you can work remotely. So that's exciting. And so for anyone that's watching or listening and are interested in one of these jobs or any opportunity that our workforce team can help with, you can reach them. you can reach them at 937-225-5627. And that's our workforce development team.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. I want to add that the U.S. Census is wrapping up, and so it's going to be ending September 30, and that's just about a month away. And everyone's participation in the census is so critical. The census is going to influence everything, everything, from your representative in local and federal government to the amount of money that we receive from the federal government for things like education, infrastructure, and housing. Now, please, it's so important to take the time to complete the census. All you got to do is visit my2020census.gov. That's my2020census.gov to respond. So you can also complete the mailed survey that has been sent to every single household. So you can respond when census takers walk through your neighborhood in the coming weeks. And I believe they're going to be going in the neighborhoods this weekend, Saturday, but I believe the Commissioners are going to help on that Saturday, I think from 11 to 2, something like that. So anyway, please pay attention. Almost the end of the census. Commissioner Rice? Okay.
Is it my turn yet?
It's your turn.
Okay. First of all, I apologize to everyone. I have a very unstable internet, so I apologize for that. I will, I have, I have heard everything, but you're not hearing me. I just want to again remind everyone that families, we need adoptive and foster parents to... We need families to open their hearts to the needs of children in our community. We are going to be hosting another informational meeting about fostering and adoption this Saturday, August 22. There's both in-person and virtual options available. The in-person meeting is at 9:00 a.m. at our Haynes Children's Center, and the virtual meeting is at 1:00 p.m. via... To register and learn more about the children who are looking for a stable and loving family, please contact Karen Lanos at 937-276-1647. That's 937-276-1647. Thank you, everyone, and I do apologize for my weak internet. But I echo everything that the other Commissioners and Michael Colbert said about...
Okay, our next Commission meeting will be next Tuesday, August 25, at 1:30.
All right, I move for adjournment.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.